Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the regular meeting of the DeKalb City Council, December 28, 2020. Prior to the roll call this evening, I'd like to remind anyone in the audience, or anyone on Zoom who has filled out a speaker request form, that will be getting to you either during the public participation portion of our agenda, or immediately within the agenda item to which you would like to speak. Also, we have a full Zoom agenda and a full Zoom following tonight, not only as part and parcel of our city council membership, but also we have a couple of presentations and some other agenda items during which we will be calling on those from Zoom. So for those of you who are on Zoom, when you are called upon, please unmute yourself and we will try to facilitate the marriage of Zoom and this meeting live as best we can. So with that, I would call the meeting to order, and I would ask our city clerk Lynn Fizikas to call the roll, please.
Morris?
Here.
Finukin?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Perkins?
Here.
McAdam?
Here.
Verbic?
Here.
Favor?
Here.
Mayor Smith?
Here.
Eight present.
Thank you very much. Would you please join me in standing in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. For those of you following on, either at home or in the room here, we are now on item C, approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions to tonight's agenda? Hearing and seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda. So moved.
Second?
It's been moved by Alderman Favor, seconded by Alderman McAdams. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Morris?
Yes.
Finukin?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdam?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Eight I.
Tonight's agenda is approved as printed. Item D, public participation. We have several members who would like to speak to the council this evening. They have opted to wait until we get to the item on the agenda to speak, with the exception of one person, and that person has asked me to read this short letter. This is from J. J. Wet, 127 Tilton Park Drive, DeKalb. Hello, all. I hope that you are having a joyful and relaxing holiday season thus far. Tonight, you are reappointing a great man to the Citizens Environmental Commission, and that man is Steve Honeywell. Steve often goes unrecognized in his efforts to make DeKalb a more green and eco-friendly place to live. He spends many hours dedicated to this commission, including research and consultation with several environmental scientists and activists. His tireless efforts will make DeKalb one of the most self-sustainable cities in northern Illinois and quite possibly the nation. Thank you, Steve. Signed, J. J. Wet. Thank you, J. J., for that. And coming up very, very shortly here, we will be asking council to approve, in addition to Mr. Honeywell, some other reappointments and appointments to boards and commissions. Okay, now we move along to presentations. Tonight, we have one presentation with a number of aspects to it, and that is the presentation of the 2021 Pride Awards to Carl Crone, Paul Leno, Nick Newman, and Armor Systems as nominated by the Citizens Environmental Commission. I'm going to ask Claire Crone, who is the chairman of the Environmental Commission, to unmute herself and to follow through with these presentations. Claire?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm very happy to present these. These particular awards go to people who have been very courteous, careful, and industrious in making sure that the environment of the city of DeKalb is well cared for and safe. And this includes for all the flora, fauna, and including people. So these Pride Awards stand for those who can offer their services as individuals, and they get an award called the Claus- I always forget how to pronounce that, Claus-Grog Award, based on a professor of biology who was very instrumental in protecting the environment. And the others are simply called Pride Awards. And so we have four recipients tonight. The first I'd like to mention is Nick Newman. He was nominated by Amy Dahl. Nick works for the Kishawaki Water Reclamation District and has coordinated the community pollinator project. In his role there, he went above and beyond in working with staff at other agencies also involved in the project, and that included the DeKalb Park District and the Soil and Water Reclamation District. The initial planting of wildflower seed involved three to seven acres of Hopkins Park, with a portion of it adjacent to the Kishawaki Water Reclamation District, so they could be cared for together. But this wasn't all he did. He's such a good planner. He led the process of a successful grant application. He addressed the long-term maintenance of this project, and he created a guidebook for plant identification, which will allow for the successful maintenance by staff and volunteers of these native plant installations. And this was just the beginning. The first seeding went on this fall. More will occur later on. There's other sites already designated. And Nick has shown total absorption and dedication to this project. So Nick, we are very pleased to give you this Pride Award. At one point later on, after I present all of them, the mayor is going to show a picture of the award that you will be sent in the mail, because we can't do this in person. So thank you very much, Nick. Okay, the next award goes to Paul Leno. He's otherwise known to a lot of people as Scrap and Pallet Man, and some of you may actually have had his services if you left your metal items on the curb. He is not here today to accept this award. However, I will accept it on his behalf. I nominated Paul. Paul has significantly contributed to improving the environment in DeKalb for over three and a half years. What he does is he collects metal scrap left along curbs and by local residents that otherwise would have gone to the landfill. Now, he started a YouTube scrapping channel called Scrap and Pallet Man. And as he collects items, he wears a video camera on his cap. If you've ever tuned into this particular station, you will have seen him. And he will record and comment as he makes his route. Every load of goods is transported to DIMCO in DeKalb for recycling, and reusable items are otherwise sold, keeping all of it out of the landfill. That's his big contribution. Believe it or not, the interest in Paul's work has expanded across the globe, and over 150,000 individuals subscribe to his YouTube channel. And they watch him as he goes through the streets of DeKalb, as well as Sycamore, Genoa, Malta, and Maple Park. So I'm very happy to also give him a Pride Award this year for this huge benefit to the environment. Now, the next person is Carl Crone. He happens to be my husband. He was nominated by Rachel Farrell of the Citizens Environmental Commission. Carl has served DeKalb as an essential worker in the position of a U.S. postal carrier for many years here in DeKalb. In this capacity, he has successfully coordinated the annual National Association of Letter Carriers food drives that have provided thousands of pounds of food to local food banks for at least a decade now. Of course, this year he had to hold back because of the pandemic. But as he travels his postal route, he was very troubled by the large quantities of otherwise recyclable items left on curbs and then loaded into garbage trucks. Inspired by YouTube videos posted by Scrap and Pallet Man, he began to salvage these items on his time off. See them on his route, go back in the evening and grab them. He also takes them to DIMCO for recycling, hundreds of pounds of them at a time. And those that are good enough for resale, he donates to the Tanzania Development Support Group to sell at their yard sale. So we are, again, very, very pleased to offer Carl Crone this Pride Award. Lastly, Armor Systems, nominated by Steve Honeywell, that had just been mentioned, also of the Citizens Environmental Commission. Armor Systems provides free electronic recycling, and preventing such items from ending up in the landfill is extremely important because of the hazardous materials that could contaminate ultimately our water table. Armor also charges only a nominal fee of $10 for recycling the larger CRT monitors, which is a real bargain for people that really need to get rid of these larger, older pieces of electronic. Because of this, we offer Armor Systems as well a Pride Award. So to these four recipients this year, we are very happy. No one was able to receive that from Armor. However, all of them will receive their awards in the mail. And hopefully, Mayor Smith, you'll be able to show us a picture of what these awards will look like. Thank you very much.
There, you can see that on the screen that says City of DeKalb. This is just one of them. They all look fairly similar. This is Nick Newman's. So Claire, I want to thank you for spearheading this presentation tonight. But more than that, I'd like to thank you for your continued good service as chair of the Environmental Commission. I've often said to folks, if you want to come to a commission where the agenda is short and the discussion is limited, do not come to an environmental commission, right? They are some of the more exhaustive meetings, but your members are so passionate. And as a matter of fact, I think we have three of your members who have opted to be reappointed tonight. So again, thank you, Claire, for your work on presenting these 2020, 2021 Pride Awards. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, let's move along now to item F on the agenda. These are appointments. If council agrees, we can approve these after I read them in omnibus fashion. Does that sound okay? I'm looking at Zoom. I see Carolyn, you're shaking your head yes. Tracy, you are. Bill, you are so good. I would like to have council consider these appointments and reappointments. And I have a number of them tonight. The primary reason being that, if you recall, a couple of years ago, just for logistical purposes, we felt it would be easier to have terms of our boards and commissions expire on the 31st of each calendar year. And so even though somebody might join us in the middle of a year, their expiration date will be on December 31 of a given year. So I would like to ask omnibus approval of board and commission appointments as follows. Number one, appointment of Kenneth Brown and Aaron Robertson to the Citizens Community Enhancement Commission for a three-year term, January 1, 2021, to December 31, 2023. Mr. Brown is a resident of the First Ward. I have chatted with him. He has been in the event planning business, the real estate business. Alderman Morris suggested that I visit with him, and he's excited at joining our enhancement commission. Aaron Robertson was suggested to me by Alderman McAdams after having worked with the Alderman and as the chair of the mural, which was done underneath Lincoln Highway by the lagoon area. And Mr. Robertson has a keen interest in art, public art, and I think will add to, as a new member of the enhancement commission. We have one new appointment in addition to those two, and that is Maria Pena Graham to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a five-year term, January 1, 2021, to December 31, 2025. Maria has been a longtime resident of the city of DeKalb. She is in the real estate business. She has a good lay of the land, if you will. She has a good empathy for and relationship with the Hispanic community in the city of DeKalb. And I think she's going to add considerably to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Maria also, incidentally, told me that she had already sold a home to a new Facebook employee who is transferring in from the Facebook facility in Washington. And they're going to reside in the city of DeKalb, which is great. So the others now are, I will not describe too much about them other than to say that all of these folks... Have you folks been hearing me well enough on most of what I've talked about? Okay, Jeremy tells me that I was breaking up. And as Neil Sedaka used to say, breaking up is hard to do. Okay, now we're going to have some reappointments. These folks have all indicated an interest in staying on their boards and commissions. And we can't thank them enough for their desire to do this. So I've got 1, 2, 3, 4 reappointments to the Citizens Environmental Commission for two-year terms, January 1, 2021, to December 31, 2022. Claire Crone, Steve Honeywell, Rachel Farrell, and Sharon Scott Skyla. We have one person who I would like to reappoint to the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners for a three-year term, January 1, 2021, to December 31, 2023, Tony Chulick. I'd like to ask for the reappointment of Brad Hoy to the Citizens Community Enhancement Commission for a three-year term, January 1, 2021, through December 31, 2023. I'd like to ask for two reappointments to our Economic Development Commission for a three-year term, January 1, 2021, through December 31, 2023. They are Jeff Richardson and Vernice Edgell-Walden. I'd ask for the reappointment of three individuals to the Human Relations Commission, Larry Apperson, Nadine Franklin, and Lisa King. Three-year terms, January 1, 2021, to December 31, 2023. Two reappointments to the Airport Advisory Board for a four-year term, January 1, 2021, to December 31, 2024, Paul Borick and Matt Duffy. And finally, we have one reappointment to the Planning and Zoning Commission, Jerry Wright, for a five-year term, beginning January 1, 2021, and ending December 31, 2025. I would entertain a motion to, in omnibus form, to approve these mayoral appointments and reappointments.
So moved.
Second?
It's been moved by Alderman Finukin, seconded by Alderman McAdams. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Finukin?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdam?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Eight I.
Those reappointments and appointments are approved. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Now we move to the consent agenda, item number G on tonight's agenda. All of these agenda items are usually enacted by one motion unless a council member desires that one of these items be removed from the consent agenda. The consent agenda items that we are asking to consider tonight, number one, accounts payable and payroll through December 28, 2020 in the amount of $3,026,037.52. Number two, investment and bank balance summary through October, 2020. Number three, year-to-date revenues and expenditures through October, 2020. Number four, hospitality recovery program update through October, 2020. And number five, Freedom of Information Act FOIA report, November, 2020. Does any member of the city council request that any of these items be removed from the consent agenda? Hearing none, seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as read. So moved.
Second?
It's been moved by Alderman Favor, seconded by Alderman Verbic. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdam?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Finukin?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Eight I.
Thank you. Consent agenda is approved as presented. We have one public hearing tonight, and this is a public hearing on the vacation of an alley between Grove Street, South Fourth Street, Franklin Street, and South Fifth Street, Johann DeKalb Suites. I will open this public hearing at 6:25 and ask City Manager Nicholas to give us a description initially.
Thank you, Mayor. We will come back to this on the action agenda later on this evening. Just want to note, in addition to what I've said in the background for you, that the focus is a public alley that once served the old city hall on South Fourth Street. At four or five different sittings, the council has discussed the future development of this site, including the actual transfer, discussion of commitment to transfer title and rezoning and preliminary plan approval and so forth. And in all those sittings, there's been some reference to the need to ultimately vacate this public alley so it can be used for an access drive and for parking. And that's what this public hearing is about. The public was notified of this as required by law. It was published in the Daily Chronicle. Obviously, it's been on our website and also at this meeting tonight. And the background for that has been in the public domain.
Okay, we will have first reading on that later on in tonight's agenda. Are there any members of the public present during this public hearing who would like to speak to this item? Seeing none, I will close this public hearing at 6:27 PM. Now, moving along to item I, considerations. We have one this evening, the consideration of a matching grant to the Kishawaki Water Reclamation District, KWRD, to relocate the former DeKalb Clinic sewer. City Manager Nicholas.
Thank you, Mayor. So as the background relates, the future development of the site at Franklin and Second Street has been an interesting conundrum since the DeKalb Clinic moved out. One of the questions about how this could be a restored community asset, whether in private or public hands, has been what to do about the fact that there is a sewer, a neighborhood sewer that runs down the middle of the property going north and south. You're all familiar with that. The public is certainly familiar with that as well. That's something that couldn't be allowed today, but at some point, it was both permitted. The redevelopment of the site awaits the relocation of the sewer. This property was purchased a little over a year and a half ago by Safe Passage in April, 2019. The not-for-profit has been, first of all, planning how to lay out the property for the various uses that they provide and services. And then going through the steps in methodical fashion, they have also demolished the old clinic. As you can see, the site now is open to the subsoil below what used to be the basement floor, the lower-level floor. And the sewer is accessible by a probe that goes down three feet or so. It's been located all along its path going north and south through the site. So now is an optimal time to relocate it. The question is, there are several hands involved here, and obviously, it's owned and operated, that sewer, by the Kishawaki Water Reclamation District. And I believe Mark Eddington is on your Zoom tonight. Right now, you have up a picture graphically depicting where the sewer is in blue and how it would be relocated. About a year and a half ago, there was some talk of having to run it into the street on South Second Street and then take it south to Franklin where it would pick up another trunk line. And that would have involved a lot of reconstruction of South Second Street and public infrastructure there, curb and gutter and so forth. More heads were involved in this. The Kishawaki Water Reclamation District ultimately thought the best way to deal with this was to bring it down and easement on the Safe Passage side of the sidewalk, provided that the agency was willing to give up that easement area. And so after the conversation, they were willing to do that. That obviously affected some of their design and their landscaping and parking, but it is agreeable. Mark Eddington approached me and asked if there might be the possibility of a three-way split for the cost of the relocation, which has been estimated with some local excavators to be somewhere around up to about $75,000. twenty-five thousand from Safe Passage, twenty-five thousand from the Kishawaki Water Reclamation District, and twenty-five thousand from the city. So what's the city got in this? Why would the city want to do this? Well, first of all, I am happy, Andy Rice happy, Brian Favor's happy that they're not going to go into the street. We see what happens. We can't obviously make everybody who does a sewer tap rebuild the whole street, so they do an appropriate patch. But because it's a patch, it has a life that is going to be more limited probably than the entire street. And if you wonder how that looks when there are multiple patches, just go down South First Street from the tracks all the way down to Taylor and then make the turn going west on Taylor. And it looks like the coat of many colors, lots of different patches and so forth. Well, Second Street is a special street, and we didn't really like that idea. And so one of the reasons why this makes some sense for us to participate is that we're actually saving ourselves some money over time here, not tomorrow, not the next year. But these patches have a life, maybe five to ten years. And then after that, usually, there's alligatoring, and there's cracks and fissures that have to be repaired, and you have to date, you have to go to a larger repaving process. So that's one of the things. And then one of the other reasons is that the redevelopment of this site has been waiting for a champion, and we have one of the champion now. And we're, at the staff level, we are proposing that we enter that partnership for the sake of relocating the sewer. And that's what's before you tonight.
Is Mr. Eddington on the Zoom tonight? Mark, are you with us?
I am indeed.
Okay.
Happy to be here.
You've heard City Manager Nicholas. Would you like to add any comments?
I don't think there's anything I could say to improve on what Bill said, so I'll try to be brief and just say I completely agree with Bill's characterization of the improvement.
Very good. Thank you. City Manager Nicholas, are you asking for a vote on this this evening?
Well, it's a consideration, so we'd like to get the feel of the council, and we can bring something.
See if there's a consensus. Does this make sense? It certainly seems to make sense.
Later on, it would be a grant agreement.
From a fiscal point of view, is there, do I see that this makes sense to the City Council?
Yep.
Okay, I see shaking heads good and on Zoom and here. So yeah, Bill, if you need any further action.
I'll bring it back at the next meeting.
Okay, you have consensus.
Thank you.
Very good. Thanks. And thank you, Mark, for joining us tonight. Appreciate it. Now, I'm told that Alderman, I got a note here, Alderman Morris has lost power and will stay on for as long as possible.
Oh, my.
Now, Carolyn, you can't lose power completely. You're running for office, okay? So would you like to make a comment here before you may lose power?
No, I just wanted to apologize because, yeah, the power went out. So I'm in the dark, and I'm using my cellphone light, and my computer is well-charged, so hopefully, it'll last as long as it ought to.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Okay, moving right along to resolutions. We have several resolutions tonight. The first one is Resolution twenty-twenty-one-three-one, authorizing human services agreements with local social service agencies for human services funding, beginning January one, twenty twenty-one, through December thirty-one, twenty twenty-one. I'd ask for a motion initially and a second, and I also have an individual, Sasha Cohen, who would like to speak to this tonight as part of public participation. So I'd entertain a motion to approve these human services agreements.
So moved.
So moved.
Or second?
Okay, it's been moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderman Finukin. Would council be willing to consider these in omnibus form?
Jerry, I believe that's how it's already set up.
Okay, very good. Okay, very good. Thank you. Now, we have a motion on the floor, a second, and Sasha Cohen would like to speak to this item. Sasha?
Members of the City Council and Mayor Smith, my name for the record is Sasha Cohen, and I reside on the eight-hundred block of Edgebrook Drive here in De Kalbe. I'm here today to talk about Agenda Item J-one, the Human Services Agreement for Funding of Social Services in De Kalbe in Fiscal Year twenty twenty-one. The proposal set forth by the City Manager includes a series of small increases, all below the level of funding requested, offset by a cut of eight thousand dollars to the VAC. The total proposed amount to these wonderful organizations is less than was allocated in Fiscal Year nineteen ninety-eight. To think that we should be providing less funding for social service organizations in twenty twenty-one, following a year in which poverty, food insecurity, and illness have risen substantially than we provided in nineteen ninety-eight is an outrage. I have an alternative proposal. At the last meeting of this body, a new SSA was created for the Hunter Ridge Brook Development with an expected amount of new tax levied at a hundred thousand dollars. These funds must be used for programs that include improvements to the geographic area, including economic development initiatives. I believe that utilizing fifty-four thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty dollars of this money to fully fund these important programs will do more to aid in the economic development of the Hunter Ridge Brook Special Service Area and the Antiglidden North Community as a whole than would be gains from allocating those funds to increase surveillance of the community. Simple logic and decades of research tell us that investment in communities has more significant returns than investments in police in terms of decreased crime, increased social mobility, along with decreases in food insecurity, medical illness, and other symptoms of poverty. I'm here to beg you to fully fund summer camps for at-risk children, to fully fund fresh and healthy food access for the food insecure, to fully fund advocates for abused and neglected children in the justice system, to fully fund early intervention for substance abuse and youth and family counseling, and to fully fund services for victims of sexual assault. And if you decide not to, I would like to hear from each of you why you do not believe these services important enough to our community to give them the funding they need and have asked for, an amount so small it represents less than one-half of one percent of the city budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Sasha. Now, I'm going to ask City Manager Nicholas to give his report. We do have a motion on the floor and a second that we consider these items in omnibus fashion. City Manager Nicholas.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Cohen brought up a basic question that you always have to ask yourself, sources and uses. So what are we allocating for some of the purposes that are outlined on Page Five in the background? So if one only looked at this and didn't attend meetings, didn't read a lot of council proceedings, would think that this is all that the council does for those that might be in need and meet those categories that are outlined on Page Five. That's not true. This is just one of the pots of money. Another and more substantial one is our community development block grant money, which goes for a lot of purposes. And in addition to that, we've allocated all of the COVID money that's come to us from the federal government through the CDBG and the ITA programs toward those programs that Mr. Cohen had referenced. So what this program is, it's a modest program, to be sure. We've maintained it through good years and bad since nineteen ninety-eight, and the level has been essentially the same since the late, since the early two thousands. And this is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of general sales and use taxes. This is not federal money or state money. This is what you have set aside as a council for the years that you've been serving here and that previous councils, going back to two decades now, have set aside for those purposes that fall between, that aren't being funded or fully funded by others in our community. So the list is long. The list of requests and also the amounts of the requests are always in excess of what we are in a position to pay. But we've, again, this year budgeted a hundred and fifty thousand, which has been consistent for the last fifteen years or so. The specific agencies that are outlined here, there are fourteen that are outlined for funding. There were many more than that. As you can see by the background report, there was a little over two hundred thousand dollars worth of requests. We didn't have that in this year of being down about four, four and a half to five million dollars, but we're recommending that you maintain the same level. And each of these looks fairly familiar to you. There are a few new entries this year. They are off a little bit. Everything is off a little bit in this crazy year, but the thresholds are essentially kept the same, maybe up or down a thousand dollars or so, as you can see by the list. So we recommend the recommendations here that were provided by the committee that reviewed all of the applications and talked to the agencies and asked them about their needs as identified in their application, so.
Other than the, than one of the agency requests, which I think was VAC, which obviously is going under a transformation now, with another agency trans coming in and providing service, actually, most of the recommended funding is a little bit more, if not the very same, as we have provided in twenty twenty. Is that correct, the way I've looked at this?
It's correct.
I timed myself, but I'm going to go over, so. So basically, I commend Joanne Rouse for taking a look at these. I see we have one new applicant, Fox Valley Community Services, that were funded, that the recommended funding is five thousand dollars. So any other discussion on this? Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approved the hundred and fifty thousand dollars as recommended to these fourteen agencies. Roll call, please.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdam?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Abstain.
Finukin?
Yes.
Smith?
Abstain.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Six-I, two abstain.
Okay, just for the public record, I know Alderman Smith, you're abstaining because you have a relationship with VAC. Carolyn, do you have a relationship with one of these? Is that your reason for abstaining?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So that resolution is approved. Item number two, Resolution twenty-twenty-one-three-two, approving a collective bargaining agreement between the City of De Kalbe and the De Kalbe International Association of Firefighters, Local twelve-thirty-six, from January one, twenty twenty-one through December thirty-one, twenty twenty-four. We have someone from the audience who would like to speak to this also. Prior to that, I'd entertain a motion to approve this.
So moved.
Second? It's been moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Favor, and I am now going to call Noah Mallard, who has some comments regarding this resolution request. Noah?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, council, staff, and always most important to the firefighters of this town, City of De Kalbe residents. My name is Noah Mallard. I am here representing De Kalbe Firefighters, Local twelve-thirty-six. Tonight, I'm here to discuss to you what is before you in Resolution twenty-twenty-one-three-two, approving the collective bargaining agreement with the City of De Kalbe and IFF, Local twelve-thirty-six. First, I would like to describe to you with a very broad stroke how we've gotten to this point. Started a couple of years ago, you hired a new city manager. He gathered all bargaining unit leadership and non-bargaining representatives to lay out what he was going to do in his first year as the city manager. At that time, there were a lot of questions and very frank conversations that were had. All groups came together and started this open dialogue. Fast forward to where we're at in February and March of twenty twenty. Your city manager once again convened all representatives and stated that he wanted to work collaboratively with all parties in the midst of something that none of us had ever seen in our careers. Local twelve-thirty-six representatives were some of the first to sit down and ask how we could help. We used our resources in both our State Association, the Associated Firefighters of Illinois, and our international association, the International Association of Firefighters. These conversations revolved around ways that we could offset costs during this global pandemic. These conversations were an open dialogue that were specific to what we needed right here in De Kalbe. The beginning conversations were about PPE, funding and reimbursements. The next conversations were able to bring to the table staffing for adequate fire emergency response, a safer grant. This would have given us the ability to hire firefighters and EMS personnel without funding, with no cost to the city for three years. This would have given us a cost savings to the city of approximately a million dollars. We used every resource that we had in a very short window of time to work with the city manager, the fire administration, to get this very competitive grant filed. Approximately two months after filing, we received notification that we were not successful in obtaining this grant, but that didn't stop us. From there, we used even more energy and resources to help with ambulance billing. And then, what I believe is the biggest part of the conversation moving into this negotiation was ground emergency medical transports, GEMT funding. You've heard it multiple times in backgrounds and everything else. Local twelve-thirty-six was able to use our network of resources to acquire information, ensure that the application was appropriately filled out, and set up a very positive source of federal funds produced by our ambulance transports. As you see in your background, the number of ambulance transports has steadily increased over the last ten years. We knew that revenue had always been a big factor in the operations of our fire department, and we made it our number-one priority to find a new and different sources of revenue to help offset the cost of the fire department moving into our future. The equipment we use to protect our citizens is expensive in replacement and maintenance, can and will be a challenge for our city and fire department moving forward. To offset these costs, we've spent funds to hire a firm to help identify more local, state, and federal grants that we can apply for. We believe that there is a lot of positive growth taking place in our community. The developments like you see downtown, Facebook, Ferreira, and beyond are going to change the landscape of De Kalbe. The De Kalbe Fire Department celebrated its one hundred and fifty years of service to the De Kalbe community, beginning in, or excuse me, in twenty nineteen, in the beginning of twenty nineteen. The Kalbe Firefighters, Local twelve-thirty-six, has represented the members since April of nineteen fifty-six. The Kalbe Firefighters are proud to be a part of the fabric of this community. We have been on the front lines day in and day out battling this global pandemic with our partners in the medical field in twenty twenty. When the community calls, we will continue to be there. There is one thing that has changed with this contract that is before you that has not occurred in a very, very long time, and that is how we staff our fire department. I'm sorry, I looked up, and now I lost my place. I will bet that most of you have read or heard of the big incidents that we've had, but you didn't know that there were times where the De Kalbe firefighters had to make decisions, split-second decisions, like sending one person on a fire engine to a confirmed structure fire in town, or had another town drive our ambulance to go pick up more personnel to save a young lady's life. There are multiple stories of our members doing things that are not in any of the manuals, trainings, or standards that we adhere to on a very regular basis to provide a professional service to the community we know and care for. Adding this staffing, as is highlighted in the background, will forever take a step in the right direction to continue to help provide the professional service that everybody in De Kalbe has come accustomed to. Frankly, it will change how we are able to operate at EMS calls, fire incidents, vehicle accidents, hazardous materials responses, technical rescue emergencies, or whatever the citizens call us for. In conclusion, the Kalbe Firefighters have been here for a very long time to provide, providing and adapting their services to our community's needs. That is our mission as firefighters. The Kalbe Firefighters, Local twelve-thirty-six, are proud to be a part of the fabric of this community, and our service will continue after all of us are gone. The Kalbe Firefighters ratified this at their emergency. incidents, vehicle accidents, hazardous materials responses, technical rescue emergencies, or whatever the citizens call us for. In conclusion, the DeKalb firefighters have been here for a very long time to provide, providing and adapting their services to our community's needs. That is our mission as firefighters. The DeKalb Firefighters Local 1236 are proud to be a part of the fabric of this community, and our service will continue after all of us are gone. The DeKalb firefighters ratified this at their emergency meeting in November by a unanimous vote. We urge you to support this resolution that will forever change public service and safety in our community.
Thank you, Noah. I know we have at least one person on our city council who would like to speak to this, but prior to that, I'm going to ask city manager Nicholas to add any remarks that we may, and then we'll open it up for discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. Lieutenant Millard covered some of the ground that I was going to cover, and I appreciate his presentation. It was about 25 years ago that another city council, facing new growth, population growth on the north side of town, decided to build a fire station there. And at the time, of course, the obvious question came up, how do you staff that with existing personnel? And so there was a very modest incentive at that time, not incentive, but initiative at that time, to increase the minimum staffing from 12 to 13. And that was finally accomplished in 1990, in 2007, I guess. So we went from 11 to 12 at the time that we built the station. So we're still at that level. And what's happened since then? So 13 is a shift minimum since 2007. And what's been happening, as Lieutenant Millard pointed out, and we've all talked about it here, the demand for service has increased significantly, very significantly. Just since 2017, it's gone up 30% in terms of overall calls. And we can, we can parse the number of calls that are EMS and that are fire, but it's still calls and we roll. What we did basically back in the mid-'90s was to make a bet, a gambler's bet. We figured that if we merged the ambulances with the engines, we would have the effective strength we needed when we arrived on a fire scene, or, you know, if they were on an ambulance call, we had the engine reserve. And as you all know, and everybody in the room knows, that set off chatter for the last 25 years. Why, how come there's an ambulance with every engine, or engine with every ambulance? Well, that's, that's the way we've been staffing the necessary response to a variety of calls. It won't work anymore. It's not working. We have so many ambulance calls now, and you can see the data. I've given you a number of charts to look at and can provide more. What we're finding out is that the ambulance calls are so numerous, and for various reasons that we've talked about, and I'm happy to point out if you wish, that we now have the possibility on any fire call of an ambulance either already in service somewhere else in town that should have been assigned to the engine, or it gets peeled off, because we have to still be there. We can't say, wait, we've got a fire, we'll get to you in an hour, you know, or we'll figure out what's going on with the fire. So we have to always be responsive. Now, we have a system, a mutual aid, and that does work on the fire calls. And on very rare occasions when there's something extraordinary going on, we may need to fill our barn to help with other types of calls as well. But it's mostly the fire calls they respond to. But we can no longer sustain the level of service that we want to provide to our residents and businesses with this same shift minimum. Now, to get to where we want to be is no small task. We're just coming out, well, hopefully we're coming out of the pandemic here and certainly will at some point in '21. The bet is still out, is still open as to whether it's at the end of the first quarter or the second quarter, we don't know. But we've run some numbers to show you, I think, a fairly cautious projection of where we might be this year, this 2021, this coming year, and then through the next four years. So here's the context, and I jumped a little bit ahead. We have a contract which is expiring at the end of this month. And as you know, we did a one-year contract with the Ask Me Local, a 13, and we started talking about that initially, thinking, let's get through the pandemic and let's see where we are. And as Lieutenant Millard said, in those conversations back in April and May, which ended up on the council floor here, talking about what we had to do to save the budget and so forth, they were one of the first to step up and say, let's just flatline compensation for 2021, not knowing what the rest of the year was going to be like. But we realized that wasn't, it wasn't just about the money, it was about the cost for service and about how we're going to staff up for that. So how could we get to a higher level of staffing, and how could we afford that? We had to look out beyond one year, two years, three years, really for a full four years. So that's what's before you tonight, a four-year contract with no increase in the COLA, the Cost of Living, for 2021, and then modest, what we project to be inflationary increases in the second, third, and fourth years. And ultimately, we're going to get to a 16-person shift, and that should be enough to do one other thing, which is an additional structural problem. And that is, how do we, you've seen the overtime numbers. So we've gone from the high 300,000 a couple of years ago to now we're up pushing, when I first did a chart for you about a month and a half ago, it looked like we'd be just a little bit over a million. We might be pushing 1.3 million, and I'm fairly certain we are. So you can only do that by taking away the requirement every day to hit the shift minimum of calling back people on overtime. And I can tell you that the people who are coming back are tired and weary of it, and this is no model for going forward. Now, there are other, other things that could be done. We feel this is, this is the most judicious, considering all the, all the factors, the demands for service, which are, we don't see, we're not in control of that, we don't see that changing. We can be aggressive in looking at some other cost areas, such as health insurance, and I made a reference to that in the background here. It's not part of this contract, because that's a citywide contractual responsibility. And we can probably do that without even diminishing benefits, but we have to change the structure of our plan. And we'll be having lots of discussion about that, which ultimately will come back to you. And there's the pension costs, which are also not directly in our control, but with the alliance and the collaboration of AFFI and our local, which has people who sit on state boards and so forth, I think we're in a much stronger position to negotiate and lobby for a resolution to the pension crisis as well. So we're proposing something unique here. We haven't, it's usually, let's beat each other up at the bargaining table and see who's finally standing. I don't think that model could have helped us this year, and we didn't take that line. And we have found revenues that we never knew existed because of the collaboration we have with the firefighters, and we feel that this is just one more way that we can help the city and the residents that we serve. So we support this, and it's before you tonight for a vote.
Thank you. I'm going to open it up now to council discussion. I know Alderman Smith would like to make a few comments. Tracy?
Um, I think Noah summed it up very well. You know, I've looked at this, I've been involved with this. I go back to, there's just so much data here. I remember a fire down in Harvester Drive, I pulled some data on where we were relying on resources for pushing 50 miles with that fire out. You know, we have, now have additional large companies in our town that depend on our fire services, and we are stressing our staff to their limits. That affects their health, obviously, our health insurance, et cetera, is all tied in together. Another thing we want to think about is our ISO rating. If we don't maintain a higher level of service for fire, our homeowner's insurance will ultimately go up based on that ISO rating. And, you know, one thing we need to think, this is just to start, there are no guarantees that people will want to come to work for our fire department. I sure hope they would, but in recent months, we've lost two firemen that were hired. Bill, you can probably tell me this, they left real close together after only being here a few months because of the level of calls that they were being sent on. It was unrealistic. You know, minute matter in this game. I mean, as everybody knows, hospitals keep telling you, you know, if heart patients, stroke patients, you know, everybody says, well, we can delay the response times one minute, two minutes. That's not realistic in the medical world. These guys are out there, you know, they want to get there in time, and getting them to the hospital or doing onsite treatment quicker means more lives will be saved. So it does come down to, you know, people's lives. So I'm behind this 100%.
Thank you, Alderman Smith. Any other comments from council?
I'd like to make a comment.
Yes, Alderman Morris.
I just want to, you know, reiterate that the fire department has been short-staffed for quite a number of years now, and I think Tracy Alderman Smith brought up a great point with the ISO rating. And I think that, you know, this is something that we, we need to be doing for our staff, ensuring that we have a long-term plan to staff at the level that will provide, in accordance with the City of DeKalb's mission statement, a high level of services to the community. So I think this is really critical that we support this.
Thank you, Alderman Morris. Any other comments? Alderman Favor?
So with three-quarters of all the calls being EMS, one of the things, and it's not just our community, this happens in every community, the number of EMS calls are multiplying every single year, they're exponentially increasing. And we risk, you know, as it's already been stated, we risk sending out an ambulance and a fire truck and not having that available if there was actually a fire, you know, for someone who might be calling for a sprained ankle, but they don't want to get transported to the hospital or something like that, a somewhat non-emergency call. And this is something that, you know, we need to work on, as it's driving up our costs, it's what's driving a lot of our overtime, and we need to start getting our arms around this and trying to figure out how, as a community, we can provide alternatives to just picking up the phone and calling 911 for non-emergency phone call, for non-emergency services. So that's something I'd like to see us tackle.
Couldn't agree with you more. Alderman and McAdams?
I just want to echo what the other aldermen have said, and mention that when I was running, one of the former 5th Ward aldermen approached me and said, during his eight years in service, the overtime issue had gotten worse and they hadn't addressed it. So this addresses an issue that's been going on for longer than I've been here, and I'm relieved to see that. I believe it'll help on both ends, on the cost side as well as the personnel side. So I'm in strong support.
Thank you, Scott. Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Alderman Finuchin.
Thank you. You know, the men of the DeKalb Fire Department have provided such great service over the years for the City of DeKalb, going back way before I was on council, and I truly respect all that they do, particularly the last 10 months as we've gone through the pandemic. We know the risk that they put themselves through in normal times, let alone what's gone on here in this current year. So I'm certainly aware that by increasing the staffing, it'll make our firefighters safer in the long run and also allow them to provide better service in the long run. So I do highly support and want to pass this contract. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Finuchin. Any other comments? Seeing none, hearing none. We have a motion on the floor. A second? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Finuchin.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Adye.
That resolution is approved. Number three, Resolution 2020-133, authorizing in the approval of the Transportation Improvement Program, the TIP program, for federal fiscal years 2022 through 2026 at the DeKalb Taylor Municipal Airport. I'd entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Who made that motion?
Smith.
Okay, Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Favor. Any discussion? If not, city manager Nicholas.
Just briefly, the council's familiar with our reliance on state and federal aid for our airport, maintenance and any upgrades. And because we are reliant on those sources of funds, we have to provide multi-year plans. They're called the TIP Plan and Transportation Improvement Plan. By the way, if you're in talking about road surfacing and so forth, they have the TIP Plan for that, too. TIP Plans everywhere. Well, we've always had a TIP Plan. This, it's time for another one. The projects, the principal projects that are part of the proposed TIP, which takes us out to 2026, are identified in your background, 11, pages 11 and 12. The principal ones are those, which have already been funded, but the money has not been available to us, include the replacement of our navigational aids. We go from a VASI to a PAPI, those are the acronyms. The overlay of runway 220, which is the northeast-southwest runway, we've been calling it the newer runway, but it's getting older now. It's aging, and it's showing us age, and we have to do something about the surface, much of which, except for a local share of 7,000, it's going to be, it's millions that are going to come our way for that, to keep that runway as a welcoming way of dealing with general aviation traffic. And then ultimately rehabilitating a parallel taxiway. All that can be done, hopefully, this year, and if it can't be, I'll probably be back. You know, TIF 1 is terminated at the end of '21, and it may be possible to set up an escrow account that we can use for the local share if it has to go into '22 for, just because of the construction schedules and the timing of reimbursement. So that's what's before you. We strongly support this. The Airport Advisory Board supports it, and so does the airport manager.
Thank you, city manager Nicholas. Any discussion? Roll call.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
They've lost power.
Yes, sorry.
Finuchin.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Adye.
That resolution is approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have no ordinances for second reading tonight. We do have a couple for first reading. The first one relates to the public hearing that we had previously this evening, and that's Ordinance 2020-078, vacating an alley between Grove Street, South Fourth Street, Franklin Street, and South Fifth Street, Johann DeKalb Suites. I'd entertain a motion, please. So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman Verbic. City manager Nicholas?
Just to say that we, at the staff level, support the vacation. It's an integral part of the proposed development, which you've already supported and approved.
Very good. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Finuchin.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Adye.
That is approved on first reading. Does anyone care to waive second reading, or propose that we waive second reading and approve?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Finuchin, seconded by Alderman McAdams, that we waive second reading and approve tonight. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Morris.
Yes.
Finuchin.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Adye.
Thank you. That ordinance is approved. We now have, for first reading tonight, an Ordinance 2020-079, amending Chapter 2, City Council, by deleting Section 2.06, Committee of the Whole Meetings, and approving the 2021 schedule of meetings. I'd entertain a motion, please.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by- It's been moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderman Verbic. City Manager Nicholas?
I just want to thank Alderman Verbic for a couple of weeks ago, reminding us, we have a duty every year to set the meetings and, for the following year, the schedule. And in that context, it's legitimate to have a conversation about how we're, how we're doing the meetings, and are we hitting all the, all the notes that the public wants us to. And among those considerations, as we talked about at the last regular meeting, there's a question about whether the Committee of the Whole Meetings, which were designed as a workshop for broader, deeper dives into a number of pressing interests and concerns, whether that's the best way to approach that. Obviously, the council has the authority any, any time, 48 hours' notice, I believe, to hold a special meeting if you want to, and you can always hold a special workshop if you want to, before regular meetings or after regular meetings or on other dates and times. There was some discussion about how Committee of the Whole Meetings might be a little bit confusing to people, and I have to say, for the better part of the first month, I wasn't sure what they were, and I'm a city manager, so, we, back in 2019. But I think it's legitimate to take a look at this, and other ideas came up in the conversation a couple of weeks ago, such as, how can we more effectively use that consideration part of the agenda to tap into some of the discussion that goes on every day in our various wards and neighborhoods? Also, how about joint meetings, where they may be useful with other policymaking boards, other local taxing bodies and others? And then finally, something that I think the council feels pretty strongly about, and that's having a planning and visioning special meeting at least once a year. And there, there are several reasons why we might want to do that, and different topics, and one of those might be that comprehensive land use plan upgrade, which is, is a quintessential visioning process, and that would be appropriate certainly for a special meeting or multiple. So that's what's before you tonight. I hope I captured what the council's general mood and consensus was. We're open to your suggestion at this point.
We shall see. I think it was you, Alderman Morris, was it not, that you alluded to the fact that this was confusing a lot of residents regarding, you know, what is a Committee of the Whole, and what are you discussing there, and then what is the City Council meeting? Was that not a concern that you had, and, and if so, does this, does this change reflect something that you'd be supportive of?
Yes, this change does reflect something I am supportive of. I had multiple residents reach out with feedback that they were specifically confused about, you know, when the Committee of the Whole Meeting would be canceled. You know, they just assumed that the Whole Meeting was canceled, because it's a Committee of the Whole Meeting, so they assumed there was no City Council meeting whatsoever. And, you know, when they were told to attend a meeting, they didn't know if they should attend the 5 o'clock or the 6 o'clock, and why we had to. And, and it, you know, frankly, it began to, I began to see it very much the same way, so.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Alderman Verbic?
This is a terrific reflection of our conversation two weeks ago, and I just wanted to say thank you, and thanks to council for supporting this notion of making our meetings better for council and the public.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Adye?
That ordinance is approved on first reading. Does anyone care to waive, to move that we waive second reading and approve?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderman Perkins, that we waive second reading and approve this ordinance. Discussion? Roll call.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Fanoukian?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Adye?
Thank you. That ordinance is approved. Now we move to item M on the agenda, Reports and Communications, allowing each and every one of our city councilmen to make any comments or reports that they would care to. And Alderman Morris, you'll lead the way tonight.
So I have a scheduled event. I had some feedback from a community member complaining about trash in the Annie Glidden North Corridor. And so I have an event coming up next weekend. I would invite everyone else to take part. It's just a trash cleanup event. It's intended to be on your own terms, on your own time, safe and socially distanced, wearing masks outside, everyone doing it on their own schedule, so that we're not meeting up anywhere and spreading COVID-19. So it's scheduled for the 8th of January, but obviously, if we're not meeting physically together, it's really more a symbolic date, just to help everyone get outside and pick up some of the trash that's been blowing around this winter. That's all.
Thank you, Alderman Morris. Alderman Fanoukian, second ward.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. You know, I mentioned earlier what a great job the fire department has done this year, but that's not to leave out the rest of the city departments, police, streets and, street department, and then all the internal departments in City Hall. It all had to struggle with the pandemic that we're facing. I'm going to ask the public to continue to wear your mask, do what you can to protect yourself and protect others. Hopefully, the vaccine will get out here to DeKalb County soon, particularly to our healthcare workers and our first responders, and then on to those who have other conditions that warrant early vaccinations. So again, and Happy New Year.
Thank you, Alderman Fanoukian. Alderman Smith, third ward.
No report tonight.
Alderman Perkins, fourth ward.
No report.
And fifth ward, Alderman McAdams.
I'm happy to report that a documentary filmmaker named Nathan Stein is creating a documentary about our bureau project in the fifth ward. That's, we can all look forward to seeing that in 2021, and Happy New Year, everyone.
Thank you. Sixth ward, Alderman Verbic.
Everyone have a happy, healthy, and prosperous new year.
And seventh ward, Alderman Favor.
I'd just say thank you to everyone for condolences for the passing of my father. I really appreciate, you know, the kind words and the care that everyone showed. Thank you.
Thank you. I do have a couple of comments, very similar to my earlier remarks tonight about DeKalb's residents stepping up and accepting commission appointments. It was pleasing to see that we do have several new names who have tossed their hats in the ring for next April city elections. In the race for mayor, my successor apparent will be either Carolyn Morris or Cohen Barnes. Should Carolyn be successful, it will become her responsibility to appoint her successor as alderman of the first ward. And obviously, if Carolyn is not successful, we would hope that she would continue on as our first ward alderman. We welcome three second ward candidates, one of whom will succeed, Alderman Bill Fanoukian. My thanks to J.J. Wet, Wes Hodley, and Barbara Larson for deciding to run for office. Matthew Keys has filed as a challenger in our fourth ward, and I acknowledge his intention to serve this southern area of our city, if elected. We have one person, Sasha Cohen, who was with us earlier tonight. He seeks the position of city clerk, following Lynn Fazekas's stated intention not to file for that post. Now, my understanding is that there will be a lottery drawing tomorrow for ballot positions. Clerk Fazekas may want to make a few remarks on that in just a few, just a second or two. I recall at about this time, four years ago, that I had filed for the position of mayor, and I know how busy the next few months will be for the candidates, especially those who have contested races. Between now and Election Day, this city will make itself available to any candidates seeking information on our municipal operations. Personally, I have already indicated to Alderman Morris and to Cohen Barnes that I'm available to meet if they'd like to hear my perspective of being mayor for the last four years. Likewise, I intend to reach out to the aldermanic and clerk candidates as well. So with that, do we have a report from Lynn Fazekas, our city clerk?
Yes, we do. Just a couple of calendar items about the consolidated election. The filing period for candidates ended December 21st. We ended up with nine candidates having filed. At least one person is, is running for each office, and some offices will be contested, as it stands now. Tomorrow, we'll hold lotteries to determine ballot order in the mayor's race and the second ward race. That'll be 5:15 PM in the main floor conference room at the new city hall, and it is open to the public. Lastly, Wednesday, the 30th, is the final day to file objections to petitions with me. Thank you.
Thank you, Clerk Fazekas. City Manager Nicholas?
Just before I join you all in wishing you best wishes for the new year, I just wanted to say, this has been one heck of a year from the standpoint of public policymaking. You've been hit with a lot of things, and this council has been very thorough and very open, I believe, in considering all points of view. I've been proud to serve you in this, this unique time, and I hope that people on Zoom can also hear this. It's, it's been an opportunity that I will long remember. So I want to wish you all a very healthy and rewarding new year.
Thank you, City Manager Nicholas. Anything else? We have no executive session tonight. I would entertain a motion to adjourn this regular meeting of the DeKalb City Council.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman McAdams, that we adjourn this regular meeting. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Fanoukian?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Adye?
Thank you very much. We are adjourned. Thank you very much.